Good evening, everybody. We appreciate you coming and basically what we're going to try to do tonight is give you some information in terms of our conversations in terms of realignment and why we're talking about the realignment between Sand Ridge and Queens Creek. And it's always a difficult conversation to have. I've been through this before through our district about two years ago as we're a growing district throughout. One of the issues that we've been having obviously is in our area right here in terms of growth, in terms of where Queens Creek, we're facing some overcrowding. So I just wanted to have some conversations with you tonight in terms of showing you where we're at, in terms of where realignment is. So right now at Queens Creek, we're about 115% over capacity. If you talk to the principal, our school is full. We have those mobile units out there as well as our pre-K and anybody's driving by there every morning or afternoon understands the crowd that we have out there waiting to pick children up or picking children up with the buses. Our school capacity is 656 and we're at 756 in terms of where our numbers are. So you can see where we're overcrowded. Now, on the other hand, here at Sand Ridge and Ms. Gardner, she's the principal here at Sand Ridge, has a school capacity of 665 students and you can see that we're actually below that number here at Sand Ridge. So why are we considering student realignment? Well, one, when you have so much overcrowding at a school, it's very close in proximity. And when you look at the district maps, which we'll look at in a little bit, you'll have better understanding of why we've had that conversation and dialogue about it. One, putting students closer to assigned schools and one, transportation efficiency. There's quite a few people who are driving by Sand Ridge to go to Queens Creek. And I say that because I live right down the street, right by Queens Creek myself, knowing the area in terms of, you know, what you're facing. Most efficient use of resources, we always talk about the joint funding format we have with our county commissioners. One of the components of our county commissioners in order to have the funding continue each year is that we have to continue to talk about balancing our schools out. You know, before we can think about building new schools, we have to think about are we using the best efficiency in terms of balancing the students in each school, you know, in terms of where everybody lives. So we look at the alignment very closely to make that happen. Staff research options, we look at the trends. Well, we have ORAD, which is a group out of Raleigh. It looks at birth rates and in terms of where they're born and where they're located. And also, you know, this particular area is very heavy on military in terms of people transitioning in and out. So it's kind of hard. The growth data, the transportation, the facility capacity, they all come into the equation in terms of what our needs are. And throughout the district of Onslow County, we've been growing at a rate anywhere from 200 to 400 students a year. That's almost a half a school and that's always a challenge for us. The staff has created a viable plan that we look at and we talk about and have conversations with, with our Board of Education as well as with our county commissioners. We also have public comment. Anytime we have these type of meetings, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions when I'm finished the presentation on maybe why we are looking at this particular area or that particular area because we're very concerned about what the feedback is that we have. A decision will be made after all the comments and the data and we have considered everything in terms of what we're looking at. So the one aspect we do know is, we do know we have an overcapacity issue at Queens Creek and we do know we have some room here at Sand Ridge. Things to consider, again, the crowding at existing school student population. And we do a five and a 10-year plan. It's not like, you know, we come up with it automatically thinking that we have to do something each and every year. We're trying to look ahead visually to find out what we can do. Knowing we're growing 200 to 400 students, the funding format that we have with the county helps us plan to build five additional schools over that 10-year funding format plan. So we know we have more schools coming, but is it going to be fast enough for the rate of population that we have that are growing in our county? That's the question. And one of the questions I have when we lasted this, we can't put it up like Walmart does in six months as quick as they do. It takes us anywhere from two to three years to find the land, put the building on it and actually open it up for children. Transportation efficiency, we've got to make sure when we're delivering the students to schools that we're doing it within a sensible route, so to speak. Another consideration is our neighborhoods. We try not to split neighborhoods up as much as possible. Now, we do have some that if you'll see on this map is other maps, one side of the road may go to one school and on one side of the road we have children going to another school. And that's hard sometimes, but logistically, when you have a county that has roads, that happens throughout the district. Here's the current boundary. The green area is Sand Ridge. Burgundy is, and I say Burg- I'm colorblind, I apologize, but Burgundy is the area that is currently going to Queens Creek and the white area is Swansboro L up there. So currently your capacity at Queens Creek is 656. Your enrollment capacity is 656, but you currently have 756. So you're almost, you're at 100 over. At Sand Ridge, you're well over 100, below capacity. The new district line would propose, the green line, the green area would follow down below, you know, if I'm, you know the streets better than I do in this area, but obviously I don't have a pointer, but this area right here would be all, this would be changed now to the Sand Ridge area. And what that does and how that changes, it's about, it bounces out pretty much between the two schools. Does that give me a lot of room at Queens Creek? No, because we've just, all we're trying to do is bring it back down to capacity and we're trying to bring Sand Ridge up to where its capacity is. That means if we continue to grow, we're going to have to look at additional rooms down the road in the next five to 10 years. So we already, we already understand that. What we're doing right now is just trying to make sure that we address the Queens Creek and the Sand Ridge, the balancing out situation. So if we changed this for next year, we would be 13 students under capacity at Queens Creek Elementary and then we would be 23 students under capacity at Sand Ridge. That's pretty good. That's the best we could do in terms of looking at it. We had, we had Raleigh look at it, we've had everybody look at it, that we could probably put eyes on it to try to make as much sense as we possibly could. Understanding, you know, it does change, the ones who are living in that areas who've been going to those schools, it does change what you've been used to. The impact of boundary changes, 115 students impacted. It balances out the student population between two schools. And one of the things we wanted to do is the same thing we did on the last one, is if the fifth graders are currently going to, say, Queens Creek, they would be grandfather and infant, they could be provided transportation. If you wanted to keep your fifth grader there because they've been there ever since they've been in kindergarten, to give you an option. So those are, that's the, that's the biggest conversation of the night. Now, let me say, between the two schools, both of them are great schools. This school has, this is a global themed school. That's a global earth school. This has a Spanish immersion component to it. The law times is a magnet that actually children choose to come to this school. So we haven't had a whole lot of conversations, I haven't had a whole lot of phone calls about either school because a lot of times I'll get questions on, why do we go by this Sand Ridge school when we go to Queens Creek? So I've had conversations all along about, you know, the efficiency of transportation and how it was set up. So when we started looking at it, it just made good sense in terms of how we balanced all of this out. But what I wanted to do tonight was be able to bring this to you, you know, in this setup, in this conversation to be able to find out if there's questions or, you know, where your concerns are in this particular area, try to address it. I have Steve Myers, Steve, we, Steve right here, he works with our bus transportation. He's our auxiliary assistant superintendent and he, he's pretty much the guru in terms of working with ORAD, in terms of where our district lines and how this all bounces out. Just knowing the two schools and knowing the population, know the areas are very similar in terms of the students who attend both schools, this is probably the closest two schools that I know that resemble each other in a lot of different ways. So, you know, I would say of all the realignments I've done in the past, this one is the closest I've seen in terms of those are mirroring each other in terms of what the schools look like and the population that actually attends it. And they were built within three years of each other.
Can you tell us more about the student teacher ratio?
Denise, student teacher ratio at school?
Um, I don't know exactly now. We're about 23 probably, 23 to 1. Second grade is our largest grade right now. The guardians are smallest. So it fluctuates right now in terms of the one. We do have a lot of transitivity, so our second grade started the year, moved smaller class sizes and as military had moved in and out, then we had a quarter of a second grade in fourth grade. So there are 36. Everything else is under that.
If we want our child to stay at the current school they are now, if we provide transportation, is that an option?
It is for your fifth grade.
But not for...
Well, there's always an option for putting a request into the, to the board for that and it would be based off that situation in terms of, am I right Steve on that?
How would you do that?
Well, within your district lines, unless you have a specific cause to go to that, with outside of your district line, you're more unlikely bound to the school that's in your attendance, so.
Because the, where my street ends literally, I can see it from across the street. It's just, that's Queens Creek and I'm Sand Ridge. But so there's no other way around that?
I think you can put a request in, but at the same time, if you can evaluate it, I mean, at that point, it would make a decision. Now, if the decision wasn't something that you were comfortable with, you'd leave the request in the field. But at the same time, normally a request has to have some merit as far as okay, because there are structural programs that you want your child to attend to or something like that.
I gotta...
Most of the schools here are excellent schools. Either way, I mean, I would, I would add my get to even some...
And the drive time would, especially if you're on this side of Sand Ridge Road and you're coming by, it will cut down drive time quite a bit for those who are actually, who have been driving by to go to Queens Creek. Yours may be a little different.
How does that impact students that are currently coming to Sand Ridge on waiver? We live right on the edge of this little blue piece that's going to put us to Queens Creek as we are now, but he has a waiver to come here.
We're still under capacity, so if we're under capacity in that sense, I think both schools will be under capacity. So we'll have some wiggle room on the, if you're talking about waiver.
With the Spanish immersion program, you could go in the past, getting away, there wasn't an issue. So this is our first year actually utilizing the waiver. But I don't want it to go through a part of this program and then because of the capacity...
If they're, if they're in, if they're in the Spanish splash program, they'll remain. They'll be protected in that, yes. Now, this will be the fifth year, so this school actually has a splash, when we say splash, the Spanish immersion that started in kindergarten and they've been able to continue that all the way through to fourth grade this year. Next year it will be K5. So it's like a little magnet school in the sense of where the Spanish students, I call them, they're up and coming, they're, I mean, it's amazing program that they have at this particular school for splash, but those who are in it would be protected to be within that program.
So seeing you have an upcoming fifth grader at Queens Creek, but she has two siblings who have been at the school a couple of years, and now to keep her at this school so she doesn't have to change schools twice before going to middle school, you now have kids in two different, at two different schools.
Right. And obviously, we've had that situation, we had the last realignment like Carolina Forest and those schools. We, we gave the opportunity for grandfathering as an option for, for Carolina Forest. Now, how many actually accepted the grandfather and I can't tell you how many that was and I don't know if it was a lot, maybe a few did, but most of them who did actually have to leave Carolina Forest, I'm what the belt for, because I'm just using those two schools. The transition was very easy. We had not had any phone calls in terms of the last realignment when we did make this happen. Obviously, if you have one fifth grader at Queens Creek, the other two would be here at Sand Ridge.
There's probably a grandfather of the three.
There's not, yeah, I'm just...
That you're not splitting here.
Yeah, and I understand as a parent, we had that concern as well in the past. Yeah, so, so the two options would be, one, to keep your fifth grader there and the two would come here, or bring all three to one school. I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yes.
The fact, the subdivision over there is very well populated, it's a very big neighborhood. I know that I've found that over there is not very full right now because it is primarily a military in and out neighborhood.
Right.
What's to say that doesn't get overpopulated now, but is coming to Sand Ridge? And now this school's becoming overpopulated after you do this realignment?
Well, obviously, we're going to have to monitor like we've been at all the time. Anytime you're in a transitional or transition with military coming in and out, we have to, we stay very close, our, our base liaisons are here, we have conversations in terms of, you know, if there's going to be a, a base deployment or if there's going to be a lot of, that are actually going to come here. We try to keep a good tab on that in terms of where we're going to look at in terms of where enrollment numbers should go be. Obviously, things, you know, being in a military district, things could change very quickly on us in two years. So we're just going to have to, you know, do the best we can to try to keep our fingers on the pulse and we talk to the military folks and our partnership's been very good and trying to keep us updated. So we don't have a lot of schools that will, you know, you know, have this overcapacity issue just, you know, blow out on us without us knowing about it firsthand.
My concern is, it's pretty much, my son will be going into second grade and he's already been established in Queens Creek. He knows, he knows everything, he knows everything, like the teachers and he's, he's very well structured in that layout.
Right.
Now, is that, you're telling me, when I bought my house, knowing where I was going, purposely buying my home because of where he was going and right, and living at the school, rating the school, now I have to turn around and pretty much pull him out of his area and put him into a new school and it, and it's going to be a hard time adjusting for him now.
Absolutely understand. As a parent, knowing where you're coming from, and these are difficult decisions that we have to look at from a district, but I feel confident enough between the two schools that they're very capable and, and the two schools to be able to provide exactly the needs of all of our students. And one of the things that we really are concerned about is when you get to 100 students who are overcapacity at a school, the overcrowding issue becomes an issue. When you start having to put mobile units out or putting students into a mobile unit, it is an issue and a concern for all of us.
Was it looked at why one school's overpopulated and the other school's underpopulated, what happens?
It's just the way the district lines were drawn up at the time and it just so happened that's where the growth area was in terms of why Queens Creek. It wasn't because Queens Creek was one school better than Sand Ridge in that situation. In my opinion, that is, I may be wrong, you know, from, from a parent's standpoint of why you chose to go to Queens Creek rather than Sand Ridge. But if you look at the two very, very closely, they're very similar in a lot of ways in that situation.
I'm sorry, you keep saying they're very similar in a lot of ways, but you haven't really elaborated on similarities in programs, if I could finish. For example, the Spanish burning program, you're speaking of they started at kindergarten and are continuing possibly through fifth grade this year.
They will.
But you're not speaking on, for example, my son who's in third grade coming to Sand Ridge, being a part of integrating himself into that. Is that a possibility? If that's a possibility, what are the wait times? You're not really going into detail what we are going to be able to accomplish coming to Sand Ridge, where my son in particular, and I know a lot of children here are in the gifted program and many other programs affiliated with Queens Creek Elementary, even extracurricular programs. You haven't told us, you're not telling us.
Sure, okay. I understand what you're saying, but all I'm trying to say is as a school overall, as a school, a child coming and getting the curriculum that they need at both schools and I'm, I'm taking out the Spanish immersion, I'm talking about just, if I was sending my child to Queens Creek or to Sand Ridge, the quality of education that that child would receive, even from a gifted program or not gifted program...
But it's not the same because the testing scores are different, the, the educational difference between some of the teachers and the programs that those teachers hold are different. The environment our children have grown up in are different. Some children are coming from different states and are falling behind and have connected with certain teachers and certain programs. So you're telling me that it's the same? It's not the same. It's going to be different for every child that you're moving. You're, you're impacting essentially, you're moving essentially 50 families to propagate your agenda for what the Onslow County needs.
Right.
When every school within the Swansboro Hubert limits should probably be realigned, not just these two schools. The development of Marine Corps is, it's 3,000 Marines that they're going to be implementing in 2017. They're requesting 10,000 Marines. Now, that hasn't been approved, but if that happens, that's essentially 5,000 Marines coming to this area. That's a lot. And it's not, and it's not just junior Marines because it's usually senior Marines that are here who have the children that are school age and that's a problem. It's going to be a problem for...
Well, and that's something that will be on our plate, that we'll have to look at to see exactly how that all plays out in terms of where all those parents come and, you know, where the children actually reside. I mean, some of those will be in our area and some of those will be spread out through Onslow County.
What are the numbers before the 2016, 2017 school year that show that there is an increase in overcrowding at Queens Creek? Because all I'm seeing is just this school year, there's an increase.
Right, it's...
Because we are in a military community and...
I can go ahead and get that information for you. I don't have that on me right now, but what we see, what we've done...
You didn't make that question, you didn't ask at this meeting, though.
No ma'am, well, I'll make sure I get the information for you, but what we do is, North Carolina State's got an organizational, organizational research education laboratory. We work very closely with them and we do population projections on a five-year and 10-year basis, okay? These projections are usually within point one percent, I mean, point, I mean, 1% accuracy. And so we look at these continually on an ongoing basis.
No, I understand, I saw what the projections were counting on there, but it didn't say anything about military population.
Now, the military population is part of that study that we do. And one of the things...
I'm sorry, you could say that though.
Well, I understand ma'am. Now, one of the things, when we talk about the military, okay, we, we understand there's a fluctuation in the military on an ongoing basis and we try to factor that in as much as possible. Now, are we going to know five years from now what the military's going to do? No. Do we have a feel from historically what is, what is done? Yes. One of the things that we need to understand too is military isn't the only driving force in this, in this county anymore. Well, for example, the last couple of years...
The direct area is...
For the last couple of years, we've seen a decrease in the military, military in Onslow County. Does everybody agree with that? But yet we still continue to see 300 to 400 additional students every year, 200 to 400 students every year as outside the military. So we're seeing growth even outside the military and we're even seeing growth within the Swansboro Hubert area, Hubert area outside the military. So that's one of the reasons why we're looking at this and, and we don't do this just, okay, this year we see a big change, so we're going to go ahead and redistrict this year. I'll get the numbers for you, I mean, I'll, I'll pull them back up, I don't have them on me with right now, but I can show you over the last couple of years how we've seen the growth happening in Queens Creek Elementary and how Sand Ridge Elementary has had more of a static growth or a declining, decline in population. So it makes sense at this point in time to go ahead and try to load balance both schools.
Other question, you talk about the school's capacity, how Queens Creek is 100 over capacity, but as the principal stated, their ratios are either the same or Queens Creek is lower than what Sand Ridge has right now. So you guys are going to move 100 students over here and now their student to teacher ratio is going to be more. And so, do you guys have the budget?
So, yeah, so, so, so the teacher allowance moved to Sand Ridge when we leave from Queens Creek to come to Sand Ridge.
So you will...
Yes, it does bounce that out as well.
You guys have extra classrooms right now.
We have, there, there is capacity here, there is classrooms here.
How many extra classrooms do you guys have available for, say, 4 to 5?
Well, there's 490 right now and its school capacity is 665.
Yeah, that's just the students, right?
Right.
I'm talking about the classroom.
How many classrooms are available?
Yes.
I remember how many total classrooms we have, but I could very easily...
You know, how many open?
I could very easily empty six or seven by next week.
And see, that's not mobile units. See, at Queens Creek, we're using mobile units, so that's, that's...
That's mobile units for their preschool program only.
Yeah, but...
That's because they decided to offer a preschool program.
Right.
Sand Ridge does offer one, neither does Swansboro, so you can't play that into...
Well, that's true, but if you talk to Ms. Justice, they have no more space at, at Queens Creek.
But their ratio is still lower than what Sand Ridge is and what it's going to be.
So my understanding is if you can easily empty six or seven classrooms by next week, but then you have to get mobile units, that's just pretty much defeating the purpose of realigning if you're...
No, we will not, no, we will not need, we will not need mobile units. But the way we're going with Queens Creek, we would have to add, continue, if we didn't balance it out, first of all, we have to balance it by, by our way of joint agreement with the county commissioners. We have to balance our schools. Now, we balanced the schools in the other areas as much as we could two years ago. We didn't talk about Swansboro during that time. Now, when you look at Swansboro and you look at the numbers growing in Queens Creek and the numbers are growing in your area and are projected to grow next year, then we have to address it now. And I know it's not easy for you as parents in this room or for me as superintendent to come and have to deliver the message, but it is my, my job to come and deliver and say, we have to do something. You know, we have to address the issue. One, we have to address the joint funding format, but two, we have to try to balance it out and whose parents and whose children has to be part of that situation. We're all a community together and we know it's difficult. As a parent, if I was a parent, I would be, you know, upset some when my, when my child's going to a certain school and I understand that from a parent's standpoint. From my standpoint, in terms of schools and how you manage that and how you balance it out, this is the best I can do to bring to you in terms of how do we balance out Queens Creek and Sand Ridge.
Question, so what would happen if, say, these district lines are now moving, but you grandfather, or you give everyone who's affected by this the option to stay at their school and anyone new that's moving to this area would have to be now, you know, sectioned into Sand Ridge? You know, so you have families that overflowed and the new people that are going to be coming that potentially would have gone to Queens Creek and made it go even higher are now going to be balancing out the school here and then giving the families who want that option to stay at their school or come to, to Sand Ridge?
If they provide...
Right.
...the problem, if they do their own transition.
So tonight, we're taking your feedback. I'm going to take your feedback to our board and we've got three board members here tonight. We, we'll go back and have these conversations like we did the last time in our board and we'll have recommendations and we'll obviously address those concerns that you have tonight as parents.
I only say this because, I mean, this is a, a big military duty, but...
Sure.
When you're getting close to retirement and you choose or refuse orders to stay in a place if your kids do not have to move to school for the third or fourth time.
I understand.
And now that we're moving schools again, you know, that's just, it's frustrating.
And as parents, I understand the multiple times that you have and it's, and the resilience of our children, you know, I always praise, you know, the terms of what our children have done over the years, so.
At Queens Creek Elementary...
I'll get you.
At Queens Creek Elementary, they try to base your student on who is best for, who what teacher they get. Do, does, does Sand Ridge offer that? Because my concern is...
Yes ma'am.
They go and he's going into third grade next year, that's a testing year.
Right, right.
And to be something all new, not know my child, I don't want that to affect his testing.
So our principals worked very closely together and especially with transitions that we've had in the past, Ms. Gardner and Ms. Justice will work together for those students who are, who are transitioning from one school to the other to make sure, between those conversations, we try to find the best fit for our children with the teachers that they need. I mean, that's the best we can do, you know. Once you've been at a school for a certain period of time, you know, parents always want certain teachers because they, they've either had them before or have a comfort level with them. But in our schools, I mean, we've had pretty good, a pretty good... But in our schools, I mean, we've had pretty good, a pretty good run with it in terms of, you know, most of our parents have been pretty pleased. I have not had a lot of complaints, you know, at all from either school, so, you know, this is one of the things that you, you can't just trust what I'm saying to you. Like, like you said, I can't sell you on the curriculum until you become involved into what Sandridge is, you know.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is you haven't sold us anything on the curriculum. All you talked about was the standard.
Well, I was telling you about that additional program, but if I was, um, telling you holistically about both programs, I wouldn't really differ one from the other in terms of the quality of the program that you would have for your children if they were getting an education. And from your point of view from Queens Creek, I can understand where you think that might.
It's different. When you're buying a home.
Right.
You're spending a lot of money on a home to live in Onslow County. And you look at your schools and you say, I'm going to buy a home to go to this school. And you spend more because the median home price for Sandridge District is a hundred and fifty thousand. The median home price for Queens Creek Elementary is a hundred and eight thousand. You're changing my property value for me to go to Sandridge. Because now people, when they move here, they're going to look, what school am I going to go to? And they're not going to want to buy into my school because the testing for Sandridge is a lot lower and the rating for Sandridge is a lot lower than Queens Creek.
But I would have to say the schools aren't the reason your real estate has changed between the two. And maybe the geographic region, but I would say.
All the clubs right here.
But I would say the schools.
Our houses turn around every three years.
Right.
We're, we're very on par with what our home prices sell for and it does matter what school you're going to.
And this question, how is the school, how is the school? And that is the biggest selling point about that new quarter. And that is the biggest selling point of why I bought my home and we retired down here is the school.
Okay. Well, I would have to say, I would, I would put Sandridge and Queens Creek on the same. I don't know why the real estate's different. I'm not a real estate person, so I could, I cannot. I can't answer your questions on why that.
I'm not, yeah, I'm just going to difference between the two. I'm telling you, there is a difference.
Right.
And it does impact us financially. It does impact our.
And I don't know why, I don't know, yeah.
Based on school district.
I hear you on that.
Can we hear from the principal? Um, you know, my daughter will be starting kindergarten next year, so I'm not as affected as some of the, you know, parents here that are.
She's here to answer any questions that you have.
You know, that'd be awesome. Just to hear about some of the comparable things. Do you have a gifted program?
Absolutely. So we, all elementary schools in Onslow County have gifted program. Um, and I think I have a good teacher.
I have a really good teacher voice. Um, yes, we have a, we have a gifted program. We, just like Queens Creek, have to share our gifted teacher with another school. We share with Swansboro Elementary, so she's here two to three days a week.
Queens Creek just this year, they're, they just hired a AIG specialist full-time after school, so we no longer have to share one. So you.
Okay, I'm not aware of that, but I'm not aware of that. Typically, all elementary schools share. Um, we do, we share with Swansboro Elementary.
You guys will have to share. They won't have one after school full-time.
Not to my knowledge. Again, I'm not aware of that situation, so I can't speak to that. We do have one that is here half-time. We share her with Swansboro Elementary. She works with third, fourth, and fifth grade, and then she also does nurturing K through, um, second grade. Did you have additional questions?
I think if you could just elaborate on more of the programs you have in your IEP program, there's probably students in here that do that program.
In terms of exceptional students? IEP, you said IEP, so in terms of, yes, absolutely. Um, I mean, I don't know that I can elaborate on that. We have an exceptional needs program. Um, I have four EC teachers and one EC assistant, two EC assistants.
Are you talking about AJ or EC?
She said IEP.
Any, any program that you have.
Right.
Maybe go.
Sure.
Send us my notes.
Okay, so, yes, absolutely, IEP. Um, you know, EC services, we offer that. Um, we are global themed school, so we have partnerships just like Queens Creek does. Um, in addition to the immersion program, we're also an avid school and I know that Queens Creek is an avid school, so we utilize avid strategies. We are a mind-up school, um, which is a new program that was brought to the district. We were the, one of the first two pilot schools for that. There's a third school, Morton Elementary, that's been added to that. And that's about, um, helping our students understand how their brains work. Um, we have academic derby. We have battle of the books. We have, uh, we just did, um, all-county honors course with fifth grade, math counts, um, spelling bee, Spanish spelling bee, um, fifth grade chorus, safety patrol, um, national elementary honor society. Give me a program you're looking for and I'll tell you if we have it because I'm running out of, my brain is spinning. What are you looking for?
You can tell me on your school. I don't know what all the programs.
Okay, we, we, we've got a lot. I mean, you know, just like every other elementary school in Onslow County, we try to give our students the opportunity to participate in as many things as they can. We want to give them rich, rewarding experiences, educational experiences. We have a maker space in our library. We do video conferencing with, um, colleges in Raleigh, in the Raleigh Durham area. We do video conferencing with, um, other countries. Just, we're in the process of planning one with Mexico. So we try very hard, just like I think every elementary school, to give them rewarding and rich opportunities to be exposed to the curriculum, to be exposed to their community. We just had our annual soup night. We do a soup night every year. We're all proceeds go to the soup kitchen. We raise six hundred and fifteen dollars for Onslow County Community Ministries. That soup was all cooked and provided by, by Sandridge staff. None of it was donated by any local businesses. Um, so we're very much a family here. We're very much, you know, welcoming, come in, creating that sense of family. And I want to go back to addressing class sizes because I know that, you know, and I'm not sure exactly what the ratio is at Queens Creek versus here, and yes, our second grades are high. Our kindergarten's at fifteen. So, I mean, I think, I think class size ratio, if you were to average it out, it's going to be about the same. Um, and, and sometimes that is just a, a situation of what families are moving in and what families are moving out and I can't turn second graders away just because my second graders are big right now, so. Um, it's a great place to be. This is my second year here and I love it. Yes, ma'am.
Well, in addition to the cultural correspondence program, where college students have from UNC Carolina or NC State.
Yes, ma'am.
To a college overseas. There's also the global studies lab, which has been on.
Yes, we have a great global studies lab on the other side of our media center where we do, um, global conferencing. We have a science lab right over here for hands-on science activities. That is the blessing of space and a hundred kids is not going to take all of that space away from us.
And you correspond there in the global studies lab with museums like the North Carolina Museum in Raleigh, the Museum of History, the Museum of Science, and they will, I don't know if they still do. They just send materials.
Oh, they send, we have, we have a culture kit from India right now in the library.
Of the, of.
Fabulous.
Will teach the lesson. The students have the materials that were sent.
Yes.
So they have the same material she does and they, it's magic. And they go in there and she instructs like for, you know, takes a matter or something. And the kids, just that, that global studies lab, people really need to see that. It is really hard to act nice.
Yes, we also have a full-time military family life counselor. I don't know if Queens Creek has an MFLAC or not, um, but we have, uh, it's called an MFLAC Military Family Life Counselor who is here full-time. Um, and so having a large military community, that is also a benefit for us.
What are some of the programs, anyone knows, if you don't, that Queens Creek offers, but you guys don't?
Dance team, dance team is one. Honor's chorus involves any fourth and fifth grader that wants to be involved, not trying out and being the top three for the county or to go to the county honors chorus. Mrs. Monner makes sure that any fourth and fifth grader that is interested in learning how to read music and sing, she lets them in and they have.
Right.
And they go places.
We do, we do too. We have, well, ours is fifth grade this year because I have a new music teacher here this year. Um, so he's in.
You have to try out for it and then.
No, we don't try out for it.
County honors chorus. There is not a Sandridge honors chorus.
No, there's a Sandridge chorus.
And my other concern is the Onslow County after-school program.
We have boys and girls club here.
However, I am a registered nurse. Um, I don't work perfect hours, so I'm going to have my fifth grader in the after-school program at Queens Creek. And then my other daughter's going to be here, so then my husband, who's been in the Marine Corps for twenty-seven years, we purposely bought our house for Queens Creek Elementary, so my students, my girls would not have to move again. And here we are, two different schools, two different after-school programs. Uh, it, it's ludicrous. It's ludicrous to me. I understand the numbers, but it's not right. It's not right. To do that to my children, they struggled when they first came here. My daughter had to repeat their grade, not because of her grade, she passed technically. But we held her back. She wouldn't struggle anymore. And Mrs. Harbison took her under her wing and my daughter has excelled. She's made the principal's list. Every night since then, and now we're just going to uproot everything and change everything and it's not right. You say, well, I understand that it's hard on the kids. Not until your kids have moved, not until their dad's been deployed. You don't understand. You do not understand.
How do you explain to your child every night why he has to go to a school that he wants, because he's so used to going to the other school and loved that school? And I teach and every teacher he meets, he encountered at that school has been beyond helpful and has made him excel and want to keep learning. And now he's going to be able to uproot when he's halfway through his school, elementary school year, go to a different school. Please try to explain that to my, to my, to my child because he's already struggling as it is.
Right.
Now I have to turn around and try to get used to this curriculum when he only has a couple more years off to go.
And as parents, I, I hear you and I understand you're pleased on that. I, yes, ma'am.
Um, my question, I know from working in the school system that Queens Creek was a school of choice where students from Morton and Silverdale area were able to come to Queens Creek for their education. And I know from working there, we did get a lot of those students. Is that still happening? Because I find it discouraging if those students are still allowed to attend Queens Creek when I live in that district and it's being pushed out. It is still happening.
Far, I, I can't, I, I don't want to, I, I will never say something to you as a group that I'm not absolute positive because I don't want you to come back and say the superintendent said and it's not true. But let me do some research on that.
If they're still coming.
Well, obviously, that would be a question for me.
Then I would feel maybe we should ease it back to their homeschool.
Right. So remember, I'm taking your feedback tonight, okay? And we're going to analyze all this in terms of conversations and look at it very closely. Good question. Because I want to make sure that we're not bringing, uh, right.
Depending on those numbers.
You know, so obviously, this is a splash program. If this, the splash program was making this school to go over, then that would be a concern for us as well, just like if that was the school of choice. Now.
I have no disagree with the median schools, the school.
Right. I want you to know we're open-minded and we're not closed, but coming close. I'm just being very honest to you as I possibly can from my point of view in terms of where we're at with our schools. And when we have a hundred students over, I need to look at, you know, we got issues with a school, we only have four hundred and ninety with plenty of classrooms here. Because I can tell you right now, availability of classroom space is great for students. She's already told you about the curriculum here at Sandridge and I know the ones who are going to Queens Creek and all of you going to Queens Creek are happy there. But I haven't had complaints from the ones, the parents that are going to Sandridge wanting to go to Queens Creek either. You know what I'm saying? So.
They haven't been to Queens Creek and they're used to this school.
I, I, I understand, but I'm just saying from a capacity of looking at parents and their curriculum and being happy with their, within their curriculum.
Kids' education is based on household.
Our, our son went to kindergarten here, um, and first grade, no, kindergarten. And then that summer, we moved. And then he went to Queens Creek, first, second, he's in third grade now. He didn't have any, any problems. I mean, there wasn't, he liked, he loves it here. He loved it there. I mean, so, like saying the resilient, I mean, you know, when I told him about it, he was, his biggest concern was who in his class wasn't going to be at that school, but that was the same thing when he's in kindergarten going to first grade.
Yeah, but our kids are resilient. Our kids are going to do fine, but the fact of the matter is, is I'm the adult. I'm the one who paid for my house. I bought my house for certain reasons. I decided for my child to go to the school for certain reasons. And if I'm not accorded that freedom and that right of choice because of essentially a fifty-family problem if you average two kids per household and then you don't advocate for us to say, here are some programs, like, well, if you want your child to go to Queens Creek, we'll just tell everyone else to go or offer certain waivers for people who have been at Queens Creek for four years, three years, uh, as specified on a time, not just rising quickly. Because I think we deserve that right to have the choice for our child since we have been in this school district and we have had our children going to this school. We deserve that right of choice.
As advocates for our military population and their elementary kids who do it four times during the elementary grades, you know, that's a lot of transition for our kids. And we would like you to look at the data to see if you grandfathered every single child that's there now in that pocket and just space them. I think after one or two years, it would probably balance out. You're not running in mobile units at this point at Queens Creek.
Right.
And if you would just, you know, take a look at that.
We will.
See what the numbers would look like if you just, because the key, the key point's going to be the half of the guy that are transferred to you.
Right.
If you surveyed those parents, you know, you might could get a better feel of how many students that really come to that.
When would we have a final decision on this? I know you have a book, is that the letter?
Yeah, it's in the letter, the final decision will be March.
March.
The letter we got.
Yep, because we'll have to act on it quickly because obviously to give parents enough notification because, you know, we're already moving into the spring.
Notification for a meeting. A phone call Friday saying that this is an official meeting with enough notification for us?
Actually, I think it was actually, yeah, right.
The letter dated twenty thirteen was enough.
And if we need to have another meeting, we can have another meeting. I'm, I'm open to that as a community. Yes, because we'll be able to gather this information pretty quick in terms of putting it together to make a recommendation to the board.
I have a question. Why would the board not be aware of outstanding rule that the guy, oh, shoot, it's in the Queens Creek, it's right to choose? I mean, you got to come here and you're saying you've got this redistricting thing and it's happened. Why would the house have any rule that you don't know about or you're not aware?
No, no, no. I know we've done that in the past, but a lot of times we'll cap our situations when a school gets to a certain population. And I didn't ask that specific question, so I don't want to say absolute without knowing for sure.
Do you know if our members that are here, do they know?
They, they would not know. It would be our staff that would know on that one.
Okay, so we really need to kind of find out.
Yes.
Is that, is that.
I'm going to research that and make sure we look at that in entirety. Yeah, to see if there's any, may be able to give us more room in terms of if we, if we look at other grades or anything like that, but that's, that's an informational piece that I need to take back to my staff because I've been asked that question. You know, I know there's thirty-seven schools. We're getting ready to have thirty-nine schools and every school's a little different. So if there was a choice there, it was offered at one time in Queens Creek and still being offered and we're taking students in from other districts. Like I said, if we're over capacity, most of the time we're capped, but we do not allow anymore unless they're extending it. Uh, you know, there's a special circumstance for that child to be able to go to that school. So I don't know. That may have happened at one time and it may have stopped, or if it's continued, I need to ask that question. Why are we continuing to do it if we're a hundred students over, okay?
But I mean, I'm just saying, right now, when you're moving the county lines.
Yes.
You're, you're telling me if I'm moving the county lines, you're redistricting a hundred students.
Yes.
So those county lines represent a hundred students.
Yes.
Why can't those hundred students be, you know, asterisk or whatever and said, let's let their parents decide and all the other students moving in have to follow these guidelines? Now.
Re, realignment and redistricting is not easy on parents and families. Never has been and will not be in the future. I'm just trying to gather information tonight in this town hall meeting, which, you know, for me to stand up here and just take your feedback, and I know Steve's writing this down in terms of what's, what's going tonight to be able to try to answer some of your questions and some of you might be happy or not happy by the end of the day, but at least, you know, it gives us some insight in terms of what you're thinking as parents.
Can you tell me what I, one side of very good road is Sandridge and why the other half is Queens Creek and the other half is.
Right.
Why is one half?
You remember I told you, there's a lot of roads that is in our county that we do have children going to one school versus the other. Um, House, the terminal, what side of the road is what?
Is that just luck of the draw?
Basically, the way Steve, the way we're at, looks at it in terms of where our students lie, a lot of times that's how those lines are drawn in terms of where the major highways are.
But it's the same highway, it just.
Right, I understand. And that would be the only.
It's very confusing for me if my child has to come here. I, I mean, it's hard.
And we reference that throughout the county. We, we do have highways that split school districts all the time.
My community, this is, we've just been here for what, about forty-five years now. Do you guys not take that into consideration when they build new, when they build new communities, that the families that will be moving into them with the schools? Because that to me would be kind of foregone and on your part. Because that to me would be kind of foreboding on your part is you can't notice that. Okay, there's these three hundred houses built here, that's always especially three hundred.
We're doing that, we're, we're doing that constantly. That's why whenever we redistrict, I don't, it doesn't matter if we had three hundred homes being built now and we suddenly wanna go redistrict then, there's, there's gonna be a ton of parents that are gonna be unhappy with us even when we redistrict then. So, no matter where we put those lines at, if, if it's not the parents that we have in here now, there'll be another set of parents coming here giving me the same feedback about being upset about their own children. So, you know, we don't take this lightly about having these meetings and having you come in here and deliver this information. But this is information for you to give to us tonight. You know, rather than us just saying it. We will take this back, we'll try to answer the question on school choice. Uh, we'll try to get you more information on, um, the good things that are happening. I think Denise did a great job attorney the programs that are going out here at Sand Ridge. Um, and as a superintendent who evaluates all schools, I'm just telling you from my look at it, I'm very proud of both schools.
Back to all the kids, all the parents that are being affected by this, of what, what Sand Ridge Elementary has to offer? So we don't have to do the research ourselves. You're trying to sell us this, this
We'll try to get a, we'll try to get, we'll get some information out to you in terms of what good things are happening at Sand Ridge. How's that?
For a meet and greet with the teachers, is this
Absolutely, absolutely. Now, I will say this, if, when we make our decision and those parents who are affected, we will have an open house, we'll have a meet and greet, we're gonna have it all because we want those parents, just like militaries coming into our family. We have a strong partnership that we wanna make sure to transition as smooth because our children are our biggest concern, that we wanna make sure it's the smoothest transition.
If you want to provide our transportation, you should give us an option to move.
Okay.
Everybody in that area should have the option to go to the school.
Because the test scores, bottom line, are better at Queens Creek.
From here on out, if anybody moves into that district, they go to another school. I'm watching, I think we should have the option.
Can we schedule a appointment with the principal of this school? We need to
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then the only other question I had is when can we fill out the out-of-district form? Because right now on the Onslow County school website, you can fill out a request form.
And I, I would do that once everything's final and complete and then, then everything else would fall in order for that.
It's for the whole county, so that's, so I'm saying, when is the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen form going to be available? When can we submit?
I, I don't have any dates finalized yet, but soon as, soon as we do, we'll let you know.
Because pretty much the only thing you have told us is that
We don't have choice.
Uh, it's just capacity. This school is under capacity by a hundred students over.
Right.
That's all, you don't have any other information besides that? You don't have student ratios, you don't have programs? Like, you don't even know about the schools that, you know, could be going to Queens Creek? Like, you have no information, or you guys are the board and the head of everything, so you're not prepared at all? So what is there
We'll, we'll, we'll provide to e- each one of you in terms of what's being offered at Sand Ridge. We'll also be able to offer the opportunity of any final dates or opportunities that will come up that we'll share with our, with our board. Yes. Well, I think Steve, you have, you have everybody's, um
I have everybody's contact information. And what I'll do is I'll go ahead and, uh, if you guys want me to call you? Or do you want me, or we can have the
Well, we'll do a mailing, because I think the mailing's the best in terms of looking at the information. But if you have more questions, we'll also give you a number to call for more, for more information. And also, Ms. Gardner will be glad to meet with any, any parent as well, um, to help share the information about, or do a visit to the school if you would like to do that beforehand.
And as far as the questions that you have right here, we'll also put a link on the website and I'll contact everybody to make sure that they can go to the website to see all the questions and what, what questions were and how we answered and responding to them too. Because I know several of you have some concerns about not having the information available right now. But we, a lot of the questions are detailed questions and what we wanna do is make sure we have the accurate answers for you. So that's why we're holding off instead of giving you these vague generalities when we start saying that. So I wanna give you accurate information, we'll put it on the website. I'll contact everybody, let you guys know where the website is. And we, hopefully, we'll have this within the next couple of days.
I appreciate you coming, I appreciate your feedback and your honesty. And, uh, and more dialogue and conversations. And I know I'll probably see a bunch of you at the store in Swansboro. So, if you see me, pull me inside and, and ask me a question, I'd be, you know, glad to have a conversation with you if I need to, uh, from that standpoint. But the real person who can answer Sam Ridge's, um, autonomy would be Ms. Gardner in terms of what she has at this school and the good teachers that they have. And Ms. Justice can, uh, you know, if you wanna talk to her as the principal of Queens Creek, she could assure you as well, knowing Ms. Gardner and, and some of the staff that we have up here. And I appreciate, again, your
I'm sorry, just have a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, my daughter, she is in special needs, says she has a special needs
She, her needs would be met at, um, this school as much as the other
Asking for the bus.
Yes, 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 absolutely.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Quick question, and here's, and here's, uh, child, she's in a program currently. When they move over, would they have to be retested or is that just gonna, they're gonna, they're just gonna go from one to the next? Okay.
It'll be the same.
Thank you.
Similar to, you know, um, you know, same conditions that you have at one school versus the other would follow one to the other.
Am I sure it's Sand Ridge, um, where the girls on the run?
Yes. We do the girls on the run and stride, fall and sprint.
And what, uh, what's your date, March, that you're going to switch on?
March thirteenth.
March, wouldn't it be March seventh?
March seventh.
I, not so much a question, I just kinda wanna say, especially to the board, that I think what we were all talking about, about letting the kids come in is a big deal for some of us. Um, my kid's already moved three times already. I have three kids and we very well could be moving my, uh, kids to PCN here, which would make my kids move again to come here, to only move again the following year. So I just want you to consider that.
Thank you. And thank you for us to serve our country and thank you for those families that put up with all those transitions. And, uh, I appreciate you coming out here tonight. Thank you.